We'll call Vermillion City Council 6:00 PM regular meeting for Monday, May 5th, 2025, to order. Katie, will you please call roll?
Lieber.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Tolliver.
Yeah.
Lieber.
Yeah.
Price.
Yeah.
Holland.
Yeah.
Genoine.
Yeah.
Helwig.
Yeah.
Cheeseman.
Yeah.
Murrah.
Mayor Cole.
Here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from April 21st, 2025 special meeting and April 21st, 2025 regular meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes or a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
It's a motion to approve by Council Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Cheeseman. Any other discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item would be adoption of the agenda. If everybody has a chance to review the agenda, are there any changes that are motion to adopt?
I'm approving the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda by Council Price is their second.
Second.
Second by Council Murrah. Any other discussion on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Agenda is adopted. Visitors to be heard. Under visitors to be heard, persons, please come to the podium, state your name and address in the microphone, and please raise your hand to be recognized. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard for any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For items on the agenda, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak for one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda items unless there is unanimous consent from the council for another person to speak. Questions from the council, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. On that, is there any visitors to be heard for any items that are not on the agenda? Okay, I do have a proclamation from the city to recognizing May 4th through the 10th, 2025 as Public Service Recognition Week, whereas Americans are served every single day by the public employees at the federal, state, county, and city levels, and these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working, and whereas many public employees, including police officers, firefighters, emergency medical service workers, and others risk their lives each day in the service to the public of our community and the United States and around the world. And whereas Vermillion residents benefit from dedicated city employees working in solid waste and recycling, street, light, and power, library, water, wastewater, parks and rec, police, emergency communications, fire, EMS, code engineering, and the finance departments, day in and day out, to provide the diverse and essential services needed by the citizens of our great community with efficiency integrity. And whereas, without our Vermillion public employees and public employees at every level of the government in the United States, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And whereas, public employees strive to build, support, and continuously improve our public sector, we recognize and celebrate the indispensable contributions our public employees make while protecting our communities, taking care of our neighbors, and helping us better our community. And whereas, the efficiency of government relies on public employees who provide services in the quality and quantity required and expected by the public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the governing body, city of Vermillion, do hereby proclaim in the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week in Vermillion, South Dakota, and call upon the residents of this great city to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, and county, and city dated this day, 5th of May, 2025. At this point, I see a few of our city employees in the audience. If you guys want to come forward and take the proclamation and...I mean, sorry.
(laughing).
See Shane, Chief Brady, Dan, come on up.
(laughing).
Surprise.
Good teamwork.
I heard you guys say someone's name. I was like, look at you.
This falls under other duties as assigned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(laughing).
And if you guys want to speak anything, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you.
(laughing).
On that note, are there any other visitors to be heard for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, moving on. We have a public hearing today for the annual renewal of malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. Katie?
Thank you. Applications for renewal of the on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license have been received from each of the establishments listed on the notice of hearing. The police chief prepared a report indicating the performance and when compliance checks were completed at each establishment since July 1 of '24. City ordinance requires a written management plan upon reapplication by a licensee where convicted of a violation of any rule. No management plans are required due to failures among the compliance checks since the last renewal period in December. The city council has the ability to renew a license on two criteria, suitable person and suitable location. With respects to the location criteria, each of these licenses have previously been at this location. And with respect to the suitable person criteria, the city can determine that an applicant is not of suitable moral character and not renew the license. If the license of an application is denied, the motion must state the reason for denial, and then the applicant can't reapply for that type of license within one year. All fees have been paid for this, and I recommend reissuance of the retail on-off sale malt beverage license and South Dakota farm wine licenses for the businesses listed.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Please come forward, state your name and address before addressing.
My name is Bailey Dean, and I'm representing L. Nepal, which is 406 Bowers Street in Vermillion, South Dakota. We are requesting the malt beverage license just because we believe it increases the enhanced experience. At L. Nepal, we've heard a lot of customers' reviews that they wish we had more options, and in response to that, we would like to request this license. We also think it creates a positive competitive environment with other businesses in this town. And lastly, we think it would be beneficial to the dining experience for the entire town and within the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other visitors to be heard? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Council Holland?
It's my same yearly complaint. We have a choice of either kicking him out for a year or doing nothing. I wish there was something different. So the first question I have is to you. Do we have...no, not to you.
Chief Brady.
Chief Brady.
Chief Brady.
Is there anything that we can do about Charcoal Lounge?
I would like to have a meeting with the owner. And obviously, I just created this report in the last couple weeks, and so...
Very good. Thank you, by the way.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to pause here real quick, Chief Brady. Council Holland, can you just express, obviously, for the public that are unaware what exactly the question you have regarding Charcoal Lounge? Sorry.
There was repeated complaints. I didn't count the number, but repeated complaints of fights in, I think, and around that facility several times.
Yeah.
Very sorry.
Thank you.
So, we do reach out to the owner and talk to him about several of the incidents as they come up. So it would be nice to contact him and talk to him about all of the complaints now that we've, you know, we kind of compiled them in this report over the whole past year, and talk to him about them as a whole, and see if there is something that can be done. I wouldn't say that he is uncooperative in any way. He's always cooperated with us when any time that we've ever gone to him, but I do feel like there are some things that could be done to help deter some of the issues that happen there.
It looked like the amount of theft is down this year. Was that...am I correct?
It did appear that the amount of theft was down, yes.
I hope that's a good sign. Hope it continues.
Yes.
Thank you. One last, Katie. Katie, do we ask Charcoal Lounge to say what they're doing, or can we, to prevent this or at least slow it down?
Well, they haven't broken any law rule or regulation, so I wouldn't say that they specifically can. I think what we're going to do is have a meeting with them. Crystal and her staff will talk with them, and then we'll move on from there to see if anything gets better.
Someday, we'll have something besides kicking him out for a year, I hope.
Council Lieber, you have a question?
Well, I'm going to hitchack on what you said. I was going to ask Chief Brady. No, that's all right. I was going to ask the same questions that Rich asked, but I guess the question is to the council, if the only two things we can do is talk about the location and the individual owns it, isn't there anything that you could put in ordinance about the number of incidents that are happening there? I would think we could change that ordinance and add something, couldn't we?
It's state, isn't it?
Probably the challenge is the amount of state regulation. Technically, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the best that the city council could do would be the recommendation to suspend or to cancel a license. That decision is ultimately up to the state of South Dakota.
Department of...
Yeah, they make the final call. So they would accept your input, but it doesn't mean they will have to follow it.
Chief Brady, is the...obviously, probably the heart of the issue is probably just the amount of two things, underage consumption and the intoxication level of the individuals that get involved in these altercations or incidences?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So it's a very large number of underage consumption individuals that are downtown because of the fake IDs that are available. It's very easy to go online and obtain a fake ID, and it's very difficult for the bars with normal scanners to detect which ones are fake and which ones are not. So holding them accountable, they do sit at the door and they do check them. Should there be, you know, some reasonableness as to, you know, some individuals that they may believe are under the age of 21? Maybe. But they are following the rules as far as checking the IDs, verifying that they say that they are 21. So there is some responsibility on the people that are going into these establishments and drinking to this point as well. But there, you know, there can be some things that I think we could talk about to help deter some of the issues that happen there.
Thank you. Council Price, any other?
I do have a follow-up on that, too. We've been getting this report. We get this report every time, every year, right? So I've been seeing this report for a long time. The issues with the fake IDs and stuff seem, I mean, similar to past years. It's always an issue, and the underage drinking is always an issue. But it seemed like there was more violent incidents on the report this year than there usually are. Does that seem accurate, and do you have a sense about that?
Yep. So what we have found is that since fake IDs have been a thing, and they become more and more regular, more people use them, more people are able to get into the bars and establishments here. If there is nothing, or if there isn't a lot that we can do about it, because there are certain laws and restrictions for us to be able to keep people from going in with fake IDs, other people from other towns and cities will come here if they can also get into the bars here. And so we've learned that sometimes it's not necessarily always our people from USD or from our community, but it might be people from Sioux City, Wayne, you know, different places in Iowa, that come here and cause some of the problems that we've had. So that's why we want to, you know, crack down on the problem here so others don't come from other communities to cause those problems either.
Thank you.
Council Holland, you have one more thing to add?
I'm sorry, I meant to ask it before. I read the report, and I think every time that you saw a fake ID, they were arrested. Is that true?
They are.
Every time. What does that lead to?
They are taken to jail. They are charged with a class one misdemeanor, and then it goes up to the state's attorney's office. There is a diversion program with the state's attorney's office if they choose to participate in that. Beyond that, you know, they are given a sentence by a judge if they are found guilty. So beyond us arresting them, it's completely up to the state's attorney's office and to the judge on that particular incident.
Council Cheeseman?
Thank you.
So in terms of the IDs, I'm assuming you're talking about driver's license?
Yes.
So is there something on the driver's license that triggers if it's legit or not?
So they order these online from across seas. They look exactly like any driver's license that you'd be able to go get from that particular state. They are most often from out of state. Very few of the fake ones are from South Dakota. A regular scanner won't tell the difference, because if you just use a regular scanner, it will just say what the information is on the driver's license. Normally, what these people that are obtaining them will just have their regular name and an address from out of state in that particular state that they have a license, and then an older date of birth. The types of scanners that would have to be able to detect that these are not are ones that are used in, like, casinos and airports, which are extremely expensive and would be difficult for a bar to obtain, so.
So we can't require them to have those scanners in any way?
I don't make those rules.
I guess, could that be part of an ordinance that maybe Al's talking about?
I might look to the city attorney if he has thoughts on that.
That's a good question. I suspect that you can't require them to have something from a cost standpoint. I don't think there's anything in state law that gives you the authority to do that. Now, maybe if you're a home rule charter, maybe we can say it's not addressed and have something, but I think it would eventually come down to a cost issue. It sounds cost-benefit type issue, I would suspect, but...
I mean, there's ways to do it. There are bars in town that have very few people that get in with fake IDs. You'll see that Kerry's never has these issues, and that's very well known. So in some respect, it does come down to management and just what they allow to come in and what they don't allow to come in.
In my experience, I think part of the issue is one of these IDs are very advanced, to the point where even law enforcement, just looking at them, are difficult to identify as a fraudulent ID. And what it boils down to is law enforcement's able to identify them as a fake just because they have access to the NCIC system, where they can run a driver's license and it comes back not on file, which obviously leads to more questions of finding out it's a fake ID. The other thing is, too, and I think especially in particular with this establishment, is you have the amount of people that are in there, the amount of intoxication, and then they're all jam-packed. It's hot, alcohol's induced to not...you add the maturity level of some of the students, and it's a recipe sometimes for not good things. And I think ultimately, like Chief Brady had said, it's probably more of an issue that has to be addressed one-on-one with the police department and the establishment themselves to try to address, so. Council Tolliver?
Crystal, you think that being fully staffed and just being more available and just having a presence is going to help deter this going forward now that you're...I think you're fully staffed, aren't you, mostly?
Mostly. We're getting very close. I think that us getting fuller staffed has brought this to attention more. My staff is able to go downtown and go on foot because there's more officers on. If there's only two officers on at a time, which when we weren't as full staffed, that's what we were able to do. And then they're mostly responding to calls, and it's hard for them to get out of the car and walk downtown around by the bars, outside the bars, if they're responding to calls. Now that we have an overlap with our 10-hour shifts, there's more of them on from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM. They are able to go down and do these things more often and find, you know, people that are walking around with open containers, and a lot of them, they find, are underage. And just making more of those contacts and making more of a difference downtown.
Any other questions? Any other motions?
I move to approve.
Motion approved by Council Holland, second by Council Helwig. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have old business coming up. Second reading of ordinance, 1529. This is zoning regulations. Rezone from NRC to residential two for a location of 2532 East Main Street. Jose?
Thank you. So Mr. Will Roth, owner of the land, has requested that the city rezone Lot 3, Block 2, Arobe Edition from the NRC Natural Resource Conservation District to the R2 Residential District. This item, the first reading for this item was on April 21st. Meeting, at that meeting, the city council voted nine to zero to advance the ordinance to the second reading. No comments from the public were heard at the meeting on the 21st. The ordinance has not changed since the first reading. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the previously described property be rezoned from the NRC Natural Resource Conservation District to the R2 Residential District. And the city council approve ordinance 1529. This being the second reading, a roll call vote is required.
Thank you. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion or motions?
Nothing's changed. I move to approve.
Motion approved by Council Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Tolliver. Any other discussion on the motion? Move to a roll Nine ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Next item, we're moving into new business. We have a resolution to adopt the project plan for TIF number 11.
Thank you. I'll just note that the first four items you're going to deal with here, A, B, C, and D, under new business, all relate to the same development. Excuse me, this development would be on Lot 3 of Madison Park Edition, which would be on the south side of Roosevelt Street between North Crawford Road and North Norbeck Street. It is a...last time you had the resolution to adopt the TIF boundaries, TIF standing for tax increment financing. So this is TIF District number 11, and you approved the boundaries for TIF District number 11. Since that time, the Planning and Zoning Commission met, and they reviewed the project plan, which explains how the funding would be utilized, and that is what is before you tonight, is a resolution to consider the TIF project plan for TIF District number 11. Just a couple of notes. Right now, the base assessed value of this lot, this Block 3, is $23,953. So with the tax increment financing district, that same value, the taxes generated in that will continue to go to the school district, county, city, and the water district. The increased property value that is generated on this property over the course of up to 20 years is that increment, and that's what goes back to the developer to help pay for the improvements. This TIF district is valued...excuse me, this TIF district request is for $6 million. The money would be used for site preparations, the street, curb, and gutter, drainage, site preparation. There's a number of items that the plan outlines. Also of note, I'd say there's also a non-eligible TIF cost, those items which cannot be recovered through the TIF, of $17 million. So you're looking at about a $23 million project between the street and the housing which will be constructed there. I think for the community, one of the benefits you look at is the completion of Roosevelt Street. That is the paving being completed through there. You'll have a water connection and a sewer connection to serve that area. Sewer line will go north to Cherry Street, and then the water will be connected through there. So I think the city councils had a number of different presentations related to this. I would note that the plan does call for the first phase, or the east phase, would begin this year, and they would...that's approximately 118 units, a mix of studio, one and two-bedroom apartments. And then the second phase obviously follows once that reaches completion. Toby Morris is here with Colliers, and he can certainly speak to the detail of the plan as he wrote it. So with that, we do recommend approval of the resolution to adopt the TIF 11 project plan.
Thank you, John. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Again, Toby's here for any questions you may have. Any motions?
Pretty thoroughly discussed. I'll move to approve.
Motion approved by Council Holland. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council Cheeseman. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, moving right down to the same topic. Stensel Group loan application for the Housing Infrastructure Financing Program funding.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't reiterate everything that was taking place with regard to the project and what it is. I would note that the next item here before you is a resolution supporting the Stensel Group's application for funding from the South Dakota Housing Development Authority. You might remember back, coming out of COVID, the legislature set aside approximately $100 million of funding that could be used for infrastructure construction related to affordable housing in the state. These loans are limited to a third of the eligible project costs, which is going to be your paving, your water, and your sewer. The loan is at 2% interest, using a 20-year amortization schedule and a balloon payment at 10 years. This might sound a little bit familiar in that the city applied for one of these loan applications last year, and we're using that for the second, a portion of the cost of the second phase of the Jack Powell development. It's...I would note that this resolution does not make it an obligation of the city. You're acknowledging that they are making a loan application, as the borrowed funds will be used to build infrastructure, which will become the city's infrastructure and will be connected to the city. In essence, I believe what the South Dakota Housing Development Authority wanted to make sure is, we could have a whole bunch of developers out there going and getting loans and building stuff, and then they want to connect it to city infrastructure that may not be able to support it. In this case, I feel between the different presentations the council had, you're very well aware of this. We're very comfortable that we have the ability to accept the water and the wastewater infrastructure that will be built, and so that we do recommend approval of the resolution supporting the application to the South Dakota Housing Development Finance Infrastructure Program.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion? Any discussion by council? Is there any motions?
I move to approve.
Motion approved by Council Murrah, and second by Council Lieber. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item would be TIF number 11 developer agreement. Is that you?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So this is a developer's agreement with the owner of the property that has been discussed already twice. Prior to any construction, starting on the apartment building, Stensel must either complete all the infrastructure fronting the lot or enter into a developer's agreement with the city guaranteeing that the infrastructure will be built. This agreement addresses improvements for the extension of Roosevelt Street and also for any future construction on Mickelson Avenue. The items specifically discuss the completion of Roosevelt Street regarding, and also includes the water mains, sanitary sewer mains, when the city council requests a completion or when a future development that would utilize the street needs improvements. The same can be said about Mickelson Street. And it also states that the owner, Stensel Group, will not remonstrate against any assessments required for the construction of any of the above-mentioned improvements. This agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney. Stensel Group has accepted the terms of the agreement and will and has provided a signed copy for the mayor to sign if the council so chooses. Administration recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the developer's agreement with NJAS Development or Stensel.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion? Any motions?
I move to approve.
Motion approved by Council Cheeseman. Is it second by Council Helwig? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. I believe we have one more regarding this, would be for TIF number 11 agreement to complete public project by a private company.
So again, it's related to the previous three items. This works hand-in-hand with the developer's agreement to the fact that this actually allows a private entity to construct the public infrastructure. Again, the items that we're discussing or considering are the construction of Roosevelt Street and the sanitary sewer that would be going north to south between Roosevelt and the south lots along Cherry Street. When public infrastructure project is requested by the public or developer, the city of Vermillion typically has offered three different options to the developer. One, the project is completed by the city and assessed to the developer. Two, the project is completed by the city with the plans being done by a consultant. And finally, the third option, which is what's been considered tonight, is a project being completed entirely by a developer. In order for that to happen, the city has created a policy which essentially stipulates all the items that would have to be, to take place prior to, for this to occur as seamlessly as possible. This agreement that you're talking or considering tonight states all of those items. Firstly, Stensel will be the main point of contact. The city will pay Stensel for all oversized items, which they will be called out in the actual document. Payments will be made to Stensel upon submission of all their required documentation. Again, all of those documents are stated in the agreement itself. Stensel is responsible for paying all of the contractors and subcontractors. The city will require a copy of the contract between Stensel and any of the contractors. Stensel will guarantee the project for one year commencing on the final day of the payment is made. This is similar to any guarantee work that the city... This is similar to any guarantee work that the city would do with a contractor that we would hire. The city will require lien waivers from all suppliers prior to final payment being issued by the city. Again, this is something that we require as well if we have a contractor working for the city. The city will require insurance. Same thing, we require that, we require that from any contractor working from us. And finally, that the city will require payment and performance bond from the contractor or from Stensel. Administration recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with NJCS, NJAS Development, working at Stensel.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, council for discussion. Any discussion by council? I just want to note, this is the last of the very long process that we have with this, but it's going to bring approximately, overall, Toby, 232 beds? Is that correct? Somewhere right around there of housing infrastructure for this?
Yes, Mayor. In terms of the total number of units between Phase One, Phase Two, I would say between 220 to 230, just depending on how the final design comes out.
Perfect. So I just want to let everybody know, the community know that this is a big step to our multifamily housing that we need. It was addressed in our housing study, and I think it'll be great for now in the community, but also for students that are looking for housing. With that, Council Cheeseman?
I'd like to say too, that in reading through this this afternoon, this is really well done. I like the way that it was organized and laid out, and everything was right there. Very detail oriented.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? With that, is there a motion? Motion approved by Council Murray, is there a second? Second by Council Price. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item we have is an agreement with the University of South Dakota to provide law enforcement powers to the university police departments for the Vermillion Police Department. Chief Brady?
Thank you. So the university police department has had its law enforcement authority under the Vermillion Police Department since the early 1990s. And I believe Chief Jackson and I, with our departments together, in the last number of years, have cultivated a strong cooperative relationship centered on shared goals of keeping both the city of Vermillion and the university campus safe community. We maintain a productive partnership based on open communication and mutual support. And this agreement that we have between our departments is going to expire on June 30th of this year. So in looking over the agreements, we have removed some language that was unnecessary and outdated, and have presented a new agreement. And just to go over a few changes that we proposed to have in this new agreement, the first one is just removing the amounts that USD would, or UPD would pay the Vermillion Police Department or the city of Vermillion for each officer that they have. This was something that was left in the last agreement but wasn't enforced. So it is not something that would be a loss to the city since it wasn't being paid. The second item is just cleaning up some language from Fields Officer Training Program to Police Officer Training Program, just updating the language to something that is more relevant to us now. UPD will continue to collaborate with the Vermillion Police Department on a training plan, associated costs and equipment, and utilize available instructors to complete mandatory training requirements. We just cleaned up the language a little bit, just to continue to say that we're going to continue to put on training together with our departments. They're going to continue to allow us to have space at the university to do that and just share in that goal of training our officers together. The next item is, it was listed in the old agreement, or the one that's about to expire, as to what types of trainers, instructors that we had to have. And some of that training is becoming obsolete, and we move on to different types of training or instructors that we need. And we don't feel that it's necessary to specifically name what types of instructors there need to be. So just taking out that specific language and saying that we will have multiple instructors that are necessary in different areas that are important to both of our departments. And then that the agreements go from three years to five years. And so there's no financial difference from the old agreement to the new agreement, and I would recommend that the council accept the new agreement.
Thank you, Chief Brady. Is there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Or motions, I should say. Motion approved by Council Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Cheeseman. Any other discussion on this? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Brady.
Thank you.
Next item is the Human Relations Commission employment. In July of 2018, the city of Vermillion created the Human Relations Commission, which consists of seven members of the commission, six of which are to be residents of the city for at least six months, and then the remaining one commission member to be a student enrolled in a post-secondary education. Members of the commission serve a three-year term, with the exception of the student member, the student member is in a term for one year. Currently, we have three members stepping off of the committee. Those committee members are Mike Phelan, Becky Ryder, and then the student representative is Max Mickelson. Over, and I apologize as the memo is inaccurate, but it's actually over the last six, about six weeks, the opening has been advertised, and also with the city council meetings, the city's website and social media. The ordinance states that the terms expire with the first Monday in May, which I do believe is today. And the three individuals that have submitted expressive interest forms to serve on the Human Relations Commission is included in your packet, and one of the individuals is also a post-secondary student. There is no financial consideration as this commission members are not paid. In reference to that, I do, it is my intent to appoint the three applicants that applied, being Mohammed Mohammed, Casey Tubbs, and Ryan Church to the Vermillion Humans Relation Commission. I've had discussion with all three applicants, and in my discussion with Mohammed, I believe his unique perspective as a student will greatly benefit the commission, and Mohammed has been active, actively involved in student-led organizations at USD, and not only that, but also across the state. His experience with the Student Government Association, or SGA, has allowed him to build connections with both student and community members. And it sounds like Mohammed's view of diversity extends beyond race, ethnicity, gender, and sexual preference, and he values the importance of diverse thoughts and perspectives, and is advocate for respectful dialogue on a variety of topics. Casey, who also is a former city intern and worked with our power department, is no stranger to Vermillion and is deeply committed to ensuring that all voices are heard. Her work at the state level on social issues and her experience collaborating with individuals holding different viewpoints have shaped her belief that respectful conversation is crucial in all discussions. And lastly, Ryan, who's also a military veteran, has expressed a strong desire to continue serving on our city. Considering the vacancy left by Max Mickelson, who's also served as a military member, I believe Ryan's perspective would be valuable, and Ryan is a passionate advocate for defending people's rights and ensuring that all individuals are treated without discrimination. The one theme I did notice when speaking to all three nominees was their shared understanding that diversity encompasses more than just the race, ethnicity, gender, and sexual orientation, but they also recognize the importance of embracing a diverse thoughts and perspectives. I believe these values combined with perceptions or perspectives, I'm sorry, of the current commission members will foster a dynamic and effective board. I do welcome any feedback, and I also noticed that there are two of the applicants that are here in the audience as well, if there are any questions at all. Before that, I would open the floor for visitors to be heard, if there aren't any visitors to be heard on the item. State your name and address for the record before speaking, please.
Absolutely. It's Ryan Church. I live at 916 Lincoln Street here in Vermillion. I'd just like to thank everyone for the opportunity to come up here and present myself and present my case of why I think I'd be an outstanding candidate for this commission. Like the mayor pointed out, I have served in the military, and I currently serve as a corrections officer here in the Clay County Jail. Throughout my experiences in life, I've been able to deal with several different types of people, whether it's race or anything like that. But the important thing that I've learned is everyone together wants equal treatment. They don't want to be targeted, or harassed, or judged based off their differences. We all want to come together and find a common goal and help protect people's rights and just achieve greatness together in this town. And I really appreciate being part of that and helping people progress and find success and happiness in their life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Is there any other visitors to be heard on this item? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council, or is there a motion to approve the appointments? Motion approved by Council Lieber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Toller. Any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Welcome to me, gentlemen. Thank you. Next item for discussion is the library board appointments. Apologize as I move forward through the applicant resumes here, sorry, they're long. Appointments for the library board, in compliance with state statute, city council is responsible for appointing the members of the library board, as noted in codified law 9109. The board is comprised of five citizens appointed by the city council and one member of the city council as well. The board terms are for three years and to expire prior to the library board's meeting in May. The current members of the library board, the terms that are expiring are the current chair, which is Wayne Behringer, and Jaclyn Wilbur. The terms held by Wayne Behringer and Jaclyn Wilbur are expiring. As mentioned, the city council member is appointed to the council, or sorry, the committee, which is, I believe, Rich Holland, who also sits on that board. The library board updated its bylaws in 2016, and that one change was to limit the number of consecutive terms which a member can serve. Note that Wayne Behringer and Jaclyn Wilbur are both completing their first terms on the library board, and each are eligible to serve another term. I do want to note that Jaclyn Wilbur did, or was, appointed last year to fill a vacancy role of a term member that stepped down due to moving out of city limits. And with the exception of the city council representative, each member of the library board is eligible to receive a $25 per meeting attendance. Not all library board members, however, accept payments as their service, as they do just look at as a community service type option. At this point, I would recommend appointments, or I should say reappointments, of both Wayne Behringer and Jaclyn Wilbur to the Vermillion Library Board. Both have been dedicated members, and they bring a knowledge of current projects that the library is conducting and topics to the table and wish to continue on the serve of the board. Jaclyn has been, like I stated before, recently been appointed to the board about a year ago and is growing in her role on the board, and I do not see any justified reason in denying the request to continue. Wayne brings a tenure knowledge to the board, as he's been there for a full term already, and currently sits as president of the board and chairs over the meetings. Wayne has a good knowledge of state law and the library board. He is also, has a degree in functions of the library board as well. Also, in speaking with city staff on the applicants, it has been voiced that the current board is working well with each other and brings various perspectives to the table which result in good problem solving and a better public library. I do like the other applicant, however, just given the consideration, we only have two positions open, and I do foresee those, the two current members incumbents be reappointed. I would hope that that third applicant would take a role in some way, shape, or form with the library. So with that, my recommendation for appointment is of Wayne Behringer and Jaclyn Wilbur. Are there any visitors to be heard on that? Seeing none, council for discussion or motions? Motion approved by Council Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Price. Any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion carries. Next item is agreement with Midwest MHP LLC to resell water and sewer.
Thank you. First off, I would like to just note that that is a typo on my part, that is not an agreement, it's just a council authorization on this. Back in February of 2025, staff was informed that the new owners of Midwest Mobile Home Park were reselling utility services utilizing a ratio-based system, which was not authorized. They did have an authorization for resale from 2011, but it did not include that type of system. At that time, staff informed the park management of that violation and have worked with them over the last couple of months. In April of just last month, we received a request to authorize resale water and sewer with an authorized system. We've worked closely with the park management to make sure that the charges that they wanted proposed fell within the city's rate structure. With those rates, they're proposing to have a $7 flat fee, and then any water usage would be exactly the same as the city's rates. Sewer fees were calculated at $51.12 per lot. That would be in place until next April, when individual sewer rates can be established for each individual unit. Past councils have allowed similar agreements with other mobile home parks throughout the community. With that, there's no financial impact on the city's budget. Staff recommends approval of the resolution to allow Midwest Mobile Home Park LLC to resell utility services to the tenants for the water and sewer in the amount not exceeding current city rates.
Thank you. Shane, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Council Cheeseman?
Is this going to increase the cost of these services to the people who live in the park?
Before the new ownership took over, their original authorization was they got 5,000 gallons of water. That was, so everything was just included in the rent, anything over 5,000, and then they paid the city rates for that. So it's going to increase in the sense I would, I'm assuming that it's going to increase because they're going to pay for what they have. Some peoples are probably going to go down, some peoples will probably go up. So it just depends. They're going to pay for what they actually use now.
And from my understanding, obviously, the mobile home park cannot make a profit off of, is what this is saying. They have to sell just like what everybody else in the city pays, correct?
Yep, exactly.
A quick question then, who regulates that? Like, is, do we wait till there's a complaint made, or do they submit that, or how does that work?
So in the resolution, if they change the rates at any point, they're supposed to submit that to the city to review any rate changes on that. Historically, it's probably something we can get better at, is making sure that those are getting followed up. So a lot of times, until someone reaches out to us and says, hey, what's going on with my bill, and then they can show it to us, and then we can have that conversation, we don't really have a set standard, you know, they don't submit it to us every January and tell us what they did for the last year, so.
So it's react instead of proact?
It really is, yeah. Yep.
Council Holland?
Is there a time limit on this?
Say that.
A time limit, so many years, or for the life of the company?
It does not have a time limit to it. It's ongoing. We kind of had that conversation because the original one was with the previous owner from 2011. And so the new owner was, do they even have an agreement, you know, because they hadn't come to us to ask for it. So there is no time limit on it. It just, as they change it, if they change anything, they need to submit that for approval. So I would say the time limit is, for these prices, it's until they change those prices.
So they have to notify us if they make changes?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the council? Is there any motions? Motion approved by Council Toller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Price. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Shane. Next item we have is the first reading of ordinance 1530, amending the title for public works to resale utility services, adding language.
Thank you. So a bit of a trend here. City Code Section 5121 covers the resale of utility services, and it has historically been interpreted to include all utilities, even though it was placed in Chapter 51, which is just the electricity chapter. Proposed ordinance 1530 will carry the same spirit as 5121 with language that more clearly includes all utility services, and then is also being placed in Chapter 50 for general provisions. It will also clearly state the requirement for meters to be installed as part of any authorization. Historically, all resale authorizations have required meters to be installed, and that requirement was to ensure that no ultimate user was being overcharged for water services that they were not using. City staff have seen several instances over the last year or two where these proposing utilizing a ratio-based resale system. This updated code would be better suited to help us prohibit those systems. I would like to note that the South Dakota Fied Law 4934-14 covers overcharging. It was amended in 2024. That update removed multiple services that were prohibited from being overcharged. One of those services was water. While this update did remove that from the list, staff still believes that we should still try to protect our citizens and make sure that nobody's getting overcharged for water or sewers, that they're not using. water or sewers that they're not using. Adoption of the ordinance will only involve the publication costs. With that, staff recommends consideration of the proposed ordinance fifteen thirty and if deemed appropriate, advance it to the ordinance to second reading on May nineteenth.
Thank you. Is there any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion. Keep in mind, we'd be looking at advancing this. Motion?
I move to approve.
Advance?
Yes.
Motion to advance by Council Holland, is there a second? Second by Council Cheeseman, any discussion on this? All's favored to advance to the second reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item we have, first reading of ordinance fifteen thirty-one, reference to electricity for also the resale of utility services. Shane?
Thank you. So proposed ordinance fifteen thirty-one is an amendment to fifty-one twenty-one that updates the language to align with the previous item, ordinance fifteen thirty. Ordinance fifteen thirty-one does not take away from or add to the spirit of the original code, it's just simply updating the language so that they align with that previous item. The language has been reviewed by the city attorney. Adoption of the ordinance will only involve publication costs. Staff recommended, recommends consideration of the proposed ordinance fifteen thirty-one, deemed appropriate, advance to the ordinance to the second reading on May nineteenth.
Thank you, Shane. Any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion, any discussion by council or motion to advance? Council Libra?
Motion.
Oh, motion to advance by Council Libra. Second by Council Helwig, any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have a service rights agreement with Clay Royal Water.
Thank you. The property known as Lot Three Block Two Aruba Edition was annexed into the city limits back in March seventh of 2011. That property is currently addressed as twenty-five thirty-two East Main Street and it was earlier on this agenda, second reading of ordinance fifteen twenty-nine was approved, moving that from NRC to an R two property. This property has been undeveloped since its time it's been within the city limits. Property was recently purchased with, by a new buyer and those buyers did request water service through the city of Vermillion. Clay Royal Water Systems currently has a service at that location that is utilized as a testing site and so, and there has not been an active customer at that site since 2011. Staff have worked closely with Clay Royal Water Systems to come up with an agreement and a purchase price for the service rights of this property. The agreement to transfer the service rights is attached via review. Two parties have set a purchase price, or I'm sorry, sent a transfer date of June first to 2025. Clay Royal Waters Board of Directors unanimously approved this agreement on April twenty-eighth of 2025. The city attorney has reviewed the agreement and transfer rights. One-time purchase fee has been agreed to at a cost of $2,400. That cost was not budgeted for, but we do have money in the water budget to cover those costs. With that, administration recommends approval of the attached agreement to transfer service rights.
Thank you, Shane. Any visitors to be heard? Seeing none, move to council for discussion, any discussion by council? Any motions? Council Tallor?
Shane, what kind of infrastructure does this change when it transfers from county to city, anything?
So on this one, it doesn't, it's not going to change anything, it's literally at the dead end of both of our systems. So we're going to put a new water service across, just like we would on any house in town that's getting built. So we don't have to change anything infrastructure-wise. Clay Royal Water, they don't, they could have potentially removed their service, but they want to keep that there, so they're working with the landlord or the landowners to get an easement for that, to keep that service as a testing site for them into the future. So there'll be no change infrastructure-wise other than adding a service to our system.
Any other discussion or motions? Is there a motion? Motion approved by Council Genoine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Helwig, any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next item we have is a request to close Rose Street for USD's move-in day on August twenty-second, 2025. John?
Thank you. So both this item L and the next item M both relate to USD's move-in day. This year, that'll be on Friday, August twenty-second of 2025. So the first motion that we'd ask you to consider would be the closing of Rose Street from Coyote Village North to the Dakota Dome on Friday, August twenty-second, from 5:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then the second motion would be considered the closing of North Plum Street from East Cherry Street to Highway fifty on Friday, August twenty-second. The hours are a little different, it's 6:00 AM instead of 5:00 AM, but it would end at 4:00 PM. USD has really set up a pretty good system with this, they work with a private company who places all the cones, it's very well marked, historically has been very well marked, and the information communicated to the abutting property owners. We'd recommend the temporary closure of Rose Street and North Plum Street on August twenty-second with respect to the Rose Street five to four and North Plum Street six AM to four PM. We've historically done these as two separate motions. I would also note, due to the state's insurance, we, in the Hold Harmless Indemnification Agreement, we have language that was included as the packet that's been worked out several years ago, and we ask that that be recognized in the motion to accept the language with regard to indemnification and hold harmless.
Thank you, John. Are they even out yet?
No.
We're already talking about bringing them back.
Yep.
Love it. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion. I would note that, I know Chief Jackson was here earlier, but he did state that nothing has changed in reference to years prior on this, so I just want to let the council know on that. Is there a motion or discussion? Approval of item L. Motion by Council Murrah, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Price, any discussion?
He's going to add in that piece that John just talked about.
Oh.
With indemnification. No, no.
The indemnification.
Part of your motion to recognize that.
Is that part of your motion to recognize that? Yes.
Exactly what you said, right? I said item L.
Okay. Council Price, you agree? Okay. Any other discussion on that? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying nay. Motion for item L and recognizing the indemnification clause in there, passes. We that brings us to item M. There it is.
Item under the appropriate indemnification language included.
Thank you, Council Helwig, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Price, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying nay. Motion carries. Council Helwig, you can work with Council Murrah on that, I think of that language. Next item, we're going to request to close Main Street from Norbeck all the way to basically the courthouse for the D-Day's parade.
That is correct. So now that we have them all planned to come back, we need to throw a D-Day celebration, we need to throw a parade. So this is an annual event, as we all know. This year, Dakota Days will be on Saturday, October fourth. The request is to close Main Street from seven-thirty AM to noon. That would be from North Norbeck Street, excuse me, South Norbeck Street to High Street and then High Street from West Main Street to West National Street. I would note, obviously, sometimes parades can have some items related to it, and so we have worked with them in the past years. So the Dakota Days Committee, they're going to work with USD organizations, including the planning committee, to make sure the groups follow the parade, to clean up the parade route of debris afterwards. It's been something that's a community priority and they've done a nice job with it, but that is something that we take note of and work with them on. So we'd recommend approval of the closure for the Dakota Days Parade on October fourth from seven-thirty AM to noon for the High Street, excuse me, Main Street and High Street.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion, any discussion by Council Cheeseman?
No changes from previous years at all?
No.
Other than John Prescott's going to actually take my place in the parade so he can do all the waving.
Your writer's cramp is...
My hand is cramped after all his signing, yeah.
Probably get some candy.
Any other discussion? Council Murrah?
I just want to say, ever having, driving through that every year with the fire truck, last year was better with crowd control. It could still get better. So if they're ever, if these people are listening or watching, I strongly urge you to monitor the crowd a little better, because they do have a tendency to come out into the road. So I would hate for somebody to get hurt.
I think that's primarily, if I'm correct or wrong, primarily once you get kind of into downtown area when you get in roughly the center street area there.
Pretty much from Dakota Street through to High Street.
Downtown.
Yeah.
Any other discussion by council or motions? Motion approved by Council Tallor, is there a second? Second by Council Cheeseman, any other discussion? All in favor of the parade, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying nay. Motion carries. Is that not worded for you, Council Helwig? Next item, we have a final plat for the Marv Edition. This is in the area located northeast corner of Princeton Avenue and South Dakota Highway fifty.
Thank you. So the owner of the property has submitted a final plat for the thirty-seven-point-one acre property they own on the northeast corner of the intersection between Highway fifty and Princeton. The area consists of farmland and at one point included a small homestead that was platted separately. The owners want to combine the smaller parcel with a larger tract of land to make the larger parcel. The plat was reviewed by the county's Planning and Zoning Commission at their April twenty-first meeting. After reviewing the plat, they motioned to recommend the city council approve the plat as presented. The land being platted is within the JJZA, final plat's within the area. This area are required by state statute and city ordinance to be presented to the county's planning and zoning commission for their recommendation to the city council. The proposed plat meets all the requirements set within the JJZA. Staff and the county's planning and zoning commission recommend the plat of Marv Track One to be approved as presented.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, move to council for discussion, any discussion by council? Motion to approve by Council Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Murrah, is there any discussion on this? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying nay. Motion carries. Jose, I'll need the special pen for this.
Got it.
Thank you. Next item bid openings, well, fuel quotes.
Dan, do you have the fuel quote?
There they are.
I left mine on the printer downstairs. So for the fuel quotes, the low bid for item number one was New Century FS at $2.659. Item number two was a new bidder with Southeast Farmers Co-op of $3.06. That number. And then item number three, Jerry Service at $2.49 and item number four at $2.77.
Thank you, Katie. Any visits to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion.
Approval of the low bids.
Motion to approve the low bids by Council Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Holland, any other discussion? All in favor of the low bids, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carrying. Next item we have is the parallel taxiway reconstruction bid opening.
So the existing capital improvement plan for the airport calls for the reconstruction of the parallel taxiway. Bits were opened on this project on April thirtieth. Six bits were received. The low bid was from, the parent low bid was from ASCO out of Sioux Falls at one million two hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. There is a list of bidders provided in the packet. One thing to note is that when reviewing the proposals received, the consultant ensures that the math is correct as far as the bid and that in this case, disadvantaged business enterprise or DBEs or requirements are met. The proposal from the parent low bidder, from ASCO, was correct as far as the math was concerned, but did not demonstrate good faith effort when looking for a DBE. Because he did not meet this requirement, we essentially have to remove their bid from consideration. What this does is that we have to consider the second low bid, which is from SoCal Construction out of Sioux Falls. Their bid was again correct as far as the math and as far as their DBE requirements, they actually have a DBE subcontractor within their proposal. So they met both of those items. This project will be paid for through a combination of federal, state, and city funds, just like any project at the airport. In this case, the state and federal governments will pay ninety-seven-point-five percent, which is different. Typically, they combine, they pay ninety-five percent. So it's going to be a little bit less expensive for the city. The way that this project would work is that we would pay for a hundred percent of the project and then we get reimbursed that ninety-seven-point-five towards the end of the project itself. Administration recommends accepting the bid from SoCal Construction out of Sioux Falls at one million two hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents contingent on a final review of proposal and receipt of FAA grant funding.
Thank you, Jose. Is any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion. Council Tallor?
Jose, if there's a short version, what's the DBE or those requirements?
The federal government requires the contractor to try and hire a disadvantaged business for some of the work. They usually have a certain percentage that they have to meet and that may vary depending on project to project, could be a business owned by women or by minority or a combination of both. So that's essentially what that is.
Okay. Any other discussion by council? Motion approved by Council Genoine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Price, any other discussion?
Second.
Council Libra?
Did she need to specify with SoCal?
Do you approve for SoCal?
I have what you need to.
Council Price is okay with that, so. Motion to approve for SoCal Construction out of Sioux Falls. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, city managers report.
Thank you. Just a couple of items, before your next city council meeting on May nineteenth, the library's Historic Preservation Commission has their monthly meeting, it'll be on Wednesday, May fourteenth at nine AM here at City Hall. And the library board of trustees will meet at six PM on Wednesday, May twenty-first at the library. The Planning and Zoning Commission has a meeting next Monday, May twelfth at five-thirty here at City Hall. One item on their agenda is to request rezone four nineteen and five oh five Adams Street from R two to R three zoning, and that would advance to the May nineteenth meeting. Correct, Jose, the recommendation would? And then a couple of community events here. Park and Recreation is offering their annual open house to learn more about the mosquito abatement program. It's tomorrow, the National Guard Armory at six oh three Princeton from eleven AM to one PM. And then tomorrow afternoon, there's a groundbreaking ceremony at Cotton Park. So it's May sixth at four PM, was last week, was delayed due to rain. And that's to celebrate the start of the tennis and pickleball complex that is being built at Cotton Park. The public is invited to attend both those events. We may have a quorum of city council members there, supposed to notice of that, but there would be no business taken at those events. And just a reminder to our Labor and Finance Committee members, we hopefully will have